Is it just you and me, Kathleen?
No, the zoning board review is now in session. No, Ben, it's not just you and Kathleen. I'm gonna take a roll call here. We are short, so let me start off by the chairman, James Nadas on board. John Borden is not here as of yet. Ben Furell?
Yes, sir. Ben Furell is here.
Thank you, Kathleen Pobakis. Kathleen on mute.
I'm here.
Okay. Eric Reposa?
I'm here.
Good. Okay, we know Sue Horowitz would not be in attendance tonight. Bill Wadika is bill on. Okay, so at present, we only have four members. We need at least five per quorum. We're gonna give it a few more minutes, so just ask anyone in attendance just to, please be patient. We would prefer not have to continue the meeting due to a lack of quorum, but there is that possibility. So just, everyone just hang tight for sure. We greatly appreciate it.
Did Max think he was going there tomorrow or Saturday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Right.
Didn't say Thursday?
Yeah.
So they work some Friday, usually they cut it off.
No, it's after 4:00.
Oh, 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 okay.
Do you want to unmute everybody again?
We're gonna take a question from Paul Dernberger. We sent a request to unmute, so if you could unmute yourself, you can ask your question.
Hi, Mr. Dernberger.
Did you get any texts yet?
Yeah. Just got the volume off my key so we can hear.
It just been ringing.
Uh, I think that's on there, right? Hello, Paul? Paul Dernberger? You're up.
I'm gonna send you a text.
Here.
My turn?
I'm gonna give you a hi.
Send you a text.
Yeah, we're unmuted. There's nothing, there's nothing coming through on his microphone that, he just lowered his hand, so.
Okay, for everyone in attendance, Mr. Borden has arrived, so we do have a quorum.
Oh, I told you that. I was late coming down.
Okay, we have an attendee with a hand up. Paul Dernberger. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, for the record, the last roll call is Mr. John Borden.
John Borden, present.
Okay. We have no minutes. Previous meeting, the chairman, the only report the chairman has, just a reminder to all board members that next month, we do have the annual election of chair, vice chair, and secretary, so anyone wanting to fill one of those positions, especially chair, by all means, think about it and we'll, we'll discuss next month, so.
Oh, yeah, Jim, I want your job. I'm gonna apply for it.
Good.
Let's vote right now on that.
Yes, you didn't have the September?
Yeah, they had September minutes.
I didn't see them. Where did my packet? Uh, I somehow didn't get them. So, until next month, okay? Okay, under old business, the first petition is the continuance of the Marion Dornfield and Rick Realty LLC variance to construct the duplex on a lot, fronted on public way, which we were about halfway through the hearing. Now, unfortunately, the members that were on that petition that evening, including the alternate, are not in attendance tonight, we're missing two, Ms. Horowitz and Mr. Wadika. So we're gonna have to continue that petition to next month. Is anyone on from, is Marion Dornfield or anyone from Rick Realty onboard?
Hey, John McCoy was the...
Mr. Chairman John McCoy here.
Hey, Mr. McCoy, how are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
Good. Unfortunately, two of the members that were on that petition, one of the main members, one of the alternates are not on tonight.
Yeah, I just heard you say that, unfortunately.
Yeah. So we're gonna have to push it to our January meeting.
Yeah, and I understand the reason why. Hopefully that those members will be there at the January meeting, so we don't have to further continue.
Now, Ms. Horowitz had a conflict with the company she works for. She's actually presenting at the Newport Zoning Board, and she's generally, and Mr. Wadika, we're not quite sure of, but he's generally on as well, so.
Yeah, I think Ms. Dornfield is on by phone call, so she's probably listening to this.
Okay.
But, and Mr. Tragley was gonna be here tonight as well, and I know you, I believe the board received an additional plan since the last meeting, which we can consider when we hear this matter.
We did.
Okay. Well, I guess there's not much more to say at this point.
No, I apologize, Mr. McCoy, but you understand there's not a lot the chairman can do.
Understood, understood.
Could I have a motion that we continue the petition of Marion Dornfield, Rick Realty LLC petition to our regularly scheduled meeting of January 21st, 2021?
So moved.
Mr. Borden makes a motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Bob Lachas second. In favor by roll call, the chairman votes in favor of continuing. Mr. Borden.
John Borden votes in favor to continue the petition.
Mr. Furell?
Ben Furell votes to continue the petition?
Mr. Pobakis?
I, I vote to continue the petition as well.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I also vote to approve the petition.
Thank you very much. All right, that has been continued.
All right, we'll see you January 21st.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the next item is continuation from old business is petition by Steven Seider, African SBC Realty LLC owner, seeking to amend his special use permit grant on May 19th to remove certain conditions. Is Mr. Seider on?
Yes, sir.
And there's also, oh, there's attorney, who's also supposed to be present. I don't see him on the call if, on, on the list. If you could raise your hand. Or if you're gonna call in, dial star nine, so we can promote you to the panelist role.
Can you hear me? This is Steve Seider.
Yeah, we can hear you, Steve.
Okay, I'm, I'm with Joe Hall, who is representing me this evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, someone speed to speak up or?
Yes, Joe Hall, I'm here with Mr. Seider.
Okay, he's there.
Hang on a second, we're at a little bit of a volume, you know, hearing. Okay, um, right, could you please repeat?
Uh, yes, Attorney Joe Hall, I'm here with Steve Seider. We're, we're together.
Mr. Hall, how are you? It's been quite some time.
It has been indeed. I, I'm just fine. But I'm, I'm maturing rather rapidly, but I'm just fine.
As we all are. So, uh, please tell us, well, actually, let me swear, Mr. Seider and Mr. Seider. I can see you on, Mr. Seider, could you raise your right hand and, uh, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, could you just give your full name and address to Bob Ross, Secretary, please, for the record?
Yes, it's Steven R. Seider. I live at 2003 Cogswell Avenue in Newport, New York.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Back in 2005, the zoning board approved this facility out at the industrial park that's known as Park Place. It's been in operation now for 15 years. We have been looking to make a couple of modifications to, two or three restrictions that were placed on the property. One of them is to allow us to relocate the dumpster, but I don't think we need to get any approval from that, as long as we continue to comply with the requirement that it be as well concealed as possible. And that's fine. It's going to be placed on the north side of the building. One of the other requirements that was imposed was applicable to outside storage. Now, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go over and look at this facility, but it's a first-class operation, and the only thing...
Mr. Hall, if I could stop you for a second, this is John Borden.
Yeah.
I'd like to revisit the dumpster before we move on. My understanding, reading the documentation package, was that it was gonna be inside and was, that waste management was gonna drive inside the building to pick it up. So my understanding was there would be no outside dumpster. Is that correct?
I, I got the impression from the original restriction that it was just a matter of imposing proper screening, and that as long as we complied with that, that maybe everybody would be okay with that. I, I don't, I looked at the decision. I don't think inside storage was a requirement, to be honest.
It wasn't, but I thought in your packet, you mentioned that you were gonna have a mobile dumpster that you were gonna keep in the building.
Oh, yes, that's, that's true. Mr. Seider agreed to do that, but I just wanted to make it clear that if we were up to do that, that's fine. I don't think we need to get any additional duty on that particular point.
Well, I, I guess, I guess my question would be, if, if you got permission to have the dumpster outside and someone decides to do that, my concern is that it wasn't screened. It wasn't, there was a fencing at one time, and just because it got demolished doesn't mean that it can't be replaced or repaired or rebuilt with a more structural sound. There are screened dumpsters all over the town of Portsmouth.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a, I guess my point is, and I don't need to belabor the point, was that we can still comply with the requirements of the original decision and, and properly screen it and make it as obscure as reasonably possible, and we can also continue to have our inside dumpster. So I'm not, I, I think that's okay the way it is, that language in the original decision.
Okay, all right.
The other, the other points are, there's, there are a couple of restrictions about outside storage, and the only thing we'd like to do is modify that to say that there will be no outside storage except on the north side of the building, which completely, if you're familiar with the site, you'll know it's completely screened away from everything else. We would not be using any outside storage on the west, south, or east side of the building. It would be behind the building, if any. And so we're willing to, to agree to that. We would just like to modify it to give us the option of doing it on the, on the north side if necessary.
All right, Mr. Hall, could you be a little more specific? Because allowing storage of what? Because storage is a, storage period is a very broad generic term.
Oh.
Could include anything.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm looking in terms of our existing use here. I'll let Mr. Seider address that in a second. I just wanted to explain the other, if I may, just pointing out the other requests that we're asking, and I'll come back to that, the nature of the outside storage in a second. As you probably know, this facility primarily stores vintage collectible motor vehicles. I was there one day last week, and it's, it's a first-class operation. Everything about it is first-class. And, and the cars that are there and stored there are all, not all perhaps, but most of them are collectibles. So we would like the ability to do some very, very limited work on these cars when it's required, and we would agree that none of that work would occur outside. It would all be interior. And, and what some of it would require would be some vehicle painting, but, and also some vehicle repair, but it's a very limited thing because in large part, it's associated with the collectible vehicles that are there already. So this is not going to be a body bender bender repair shop, as so, so many other facilities you might think of. That doesn't apply in this case. We would continue primary use as an automobile storage facility. I, I, I was over there, as I said the other day, I mean, the floors are painted, the places is like, it's a first-class operation, and if I had an automobile over there, I'd want every precaution taken in terms of interior use. So we're not looking to have an expanded automobile repair facility. More so, a very limited number, all in large part related to the uses that are already there. So that's, that's just an amendment to allow us to do that. We have, and I'll let Steve address that in a second. So those are what we're asking to do, where and it's all a modification of the original approval. Now, let Steve respond, first of all, to your question about what kind of storage we're looking to have on the north side of the building, and also to explain a little bit about what kind of painting activities or repair activities are, are contemplated. So, Mr. Seider?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Joe. The, the ability to, let me address the issue of storage versus parking, because storage, you know, is a kind of a loose term. We never had, had really anticipated when we started the business to have anything stored outside the building. And I will say that I'm not sure that what we have outside the building, and this is on the backside of the building, qualifies as storage. I also, in my drawing that I submitted, for example, we have, we had a lobster boat out back, but that's seasonal. It's now gone. We have a couple of boat trailers of a Connex container. The Connex container has been there for a while. We do charge for but the owner of the Connex container doesn't want to pay the rates that we charged for indoor storage, obviously. So this has been a very limited kind of ancillary accommodation, if you will, to, to our clients. We've never had more than three or four items, maybe five at the most out there, but some of the, as I say, some of them, they, they kind of come and go. I've looked around the business park and if we, we are a very modest player in the external, either storage or parking area, and plus the fact that this is a, you have to drive around behind the building, which is actually private property to even see, see these things. So I just don't wanna be in trouble with the town for, for doing something that we're not supposed to do. And, but obviously, that was a condition, and we'd like to have some relief from that. And I can now move on and talk a little bit about the shop operation.
Well, let me stop you there, Mr. Seider, because I, I know I will not, as soon as Mr. Borden and maybe some of the other members have questions regarding storage, so.
Good.
So at the very onset, there was a condition placed that there was no outside storage, period. And you've been there since day one, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I have to assume that you were aware of that condition. And here we are, umpteen years later, and you're telling me that there's, there's been storage back there against the condition that was there, and you never came before to have that really changed or modified or, or removed. Now, to my point, I was actually the one that composed, you know, outside storage and for some of the reasons that you've just given. I'm trying to find out where in the grand scheme of things a Connex container comes into play with the business. The business was to store and service antique or older vehicles, possibly boat. But I'm not sure how a Connex container falls into that, nor am I sure how a seasonal lobster boat falls into that as well, and a couple of boat trailers, and it's for those reasons that I put the condition of no outside storage, because my fear was stuff was just gonna begin to amass behind this building. Now, I get what you're saying about other businesses within the park, but there have been businesses there that we have placed similar conditions on as well, or have sought during their initial special use permit request to either grant certain things or not. So I, I'd like to hear where this Connex and a couple of boat trailers and a
airplane trailer.
A, what is it?
It's an air, it's like an trailer.
Airplane trailer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's where that weighs into this. A, B, C, D, E.
So maybe you could enlighten the board as to why these things are critical to the business or business needs and why they need to be stored outside there?
Well, I would say, first of all, what I started to say in the beginning was that it kind of, this is kind of a little bit of mission creep. Yes, I should have been, we all should have been aware of these conditions. Frankly, as time goes on, you know, I guess we forgot maybe that I, at least I, I, not intentionally, I don't wanna get in trouble with the town, but I, I was not, it wasn't a conscious thing on my part. It is also very ancillary. This Connex container has nothing to do with our business. It has to do with storage for a customer, but we don't own that Connex container.
Okay, so let me interrupt you there. So I get that there are storage facilities that your customer could take there. So I guess my point is, if you're gonna request, at least in this member's eyes, request to modify or remove the outside storage, I would be, I'm very open to modifying it, but again, storage is very broad, as I said earlier, and I'd like to hear what exactly you would look to store outside. I mean, you know, are there vehicles that on occasion you may have to store outside? Obviously, a Connex container is just a storage container that some is utilizing rather than going to a storage facility.
Well, I mean, this whole, this whole area for, as a, as a business proposition for us, as I said, it's ancillary. It's been an accommodation to people. That boat trailer, for example, is a, it's a haul boat. It's a friend of mine. He says, can I, can I put it out back for two or three months? And I said, yeah, sure. If you told me that I can't do that, I mean, that's okay too. I, this is, it's not critical to the business. I'm not, I, I do share a concern that, you know, things have a way of piling up, but we have never allowed that to happen. And we wouldn't, we haven't stored anything elsewhere in the building. The only reason we're even doing it in the back is it doesn't show up. And, and, and it's limited. You know, what have we got, four or five items there? You said, look at, you know, don't, don't ever have more than six and keep it neat, you know? I'm good with that. This is not, not trying to expand and make that a huge part of our business. It's the, it's just frankly, trying to, trying to get rid of a violation here.
No, and, and I, we totally understand that. We, I greatly appreciate you coming before the board and being very open about what's there. So we're just, as, you know, our job is just to make sure that, you know, we can keep it within something controlled.
Yes.
Now, to your point, I know you don't wanna end up with four or five Connex boxes there full of stuff that Now, to your point, I know you don't want to end up with four or five Connex boxes there full of stuff that you may end up having to deal with.
That's correct.
Right.
And and the other thing, frankly, which we we take a lot of effort in the repair shop, you know, we have some parts and so forth that you know, sometimes they'll get stored out there where the dumpster used to be. We get that cleaned up. You know, we have the clientele that we have, you know, they don't want to show up to the junkyard. They want to show up to basically a showroom that is a showroom inside and outside. We spend a lot on landscaping. We spend a lot on trying to keep the place as pristine as possible, both inside and out. And so these things are as I say, they're not very visible, but we have no intention of letting them get out of hand either.
I I would propose amending the condition to allow no more than six items to be stored in the rear of the property. I also like the chairman has respect for Mr. Sider coming forward and I I can see where, you know, a friend asks, can you store a boat trailer? And you say, sure, it's ancillary. I don't think it was, I agree with what the chairman said, that you should have been aware of the conditions, but I think it was somewhat harmless and wasn't necessarily intentional. So in regards to adding language such as boat trailers or boats, containers, no more than six items of those type. Obviously, you're not going to be storing hazardous waste barrels out in the rear of your property. And to your point, it's a very high end business.
Yes.
One more thing to add to my checklist as in town planner. In storage containers, they're going to be on the property. You'll need a building permit from the the building official in order to legally have those on the property.
Hear that, Mr. Sider?
I I heard part of it. It had to do with some sort of a building permit.
Yeah, in the town of Portsmouth, to have one of those Connex containers on your property requires a building permit.
Okay, didn't know that, but we can, we can certainly is that something that that we would apply for or the owner of the Connex container would apply?
Either are, as long as there's a building permit on it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I just learned that myself, Mr. Sider, so. Okay, I think we're good with that. We're good with that. All right. So let's go ahead and move on to conditions nine and 10, which are, I guess, really the crux of this whole thing, so.
Yes. Well, we get one of the advantages that we have had in building this business has been the ability to do repair work and keep these old cars running for our client. As a matter of fact, just as an anecdote, when I built the building fifteen years ago, one of my first customers kept asking if we had a certificate of occupancy because the day he got, we got it, he was going to buy a car that we could store and keep running for him. And so this, the shop has been a, again, it's an ancillary part of our our business, but it is an attraction to it. Because if you're now, you know, sixty-two and you have an MG that you had in high school, you're no longer working on it like you used to do it, and you're afraid you can't find anybody to keep it running. So that has been our operation. Now, over time, of course, as we work on these cars, you know, somebody will run into a guardrail or they will run into a run their spoiler into a parking curb or something like that. And I'll say, well, can you, can you touch that up? Can you feed it? And so we would say, well, you know, along with other things, sure, we'll do that. And this has been going on for a number of years, but in a very minor way. And then about two and a half years ago, a fellow came to us and he said, I have a paint booth that I could sell you for five thousand dollars. And so I said, we we talked about it. Again, we were, we were oblivious to the condition about a painting, frankly. And but I I said, look at, if we're going to paint anything, we might as well do it in an environment that is safe and also one that allows us to do quality work when we have to. And in the course of this last two years, this is a confession, we have, we have painted four cars. And we've painted two or three fenders and two or three spoilers. And that's about it. It's not, again, it's not our main business. We have that five thousand dollar paint booth ended up costing close to twenty thousand because we put in all of the venting, proper venting, the the Fire-X system and all of the filters. And so it is a, it's a first class operation now. Now, I I would tell you also, this is just ancillary, but in full disclosure, right now, it's full of furniture. Unfortunately, my main mechanic, who was the fellow who was a good body man as well as a mechanic, he passed away about four weeks ago. And so I've basically sort of shut that, shut that thing down. But but it is it is obviously something that we would like some relief on. There is no intention for me or I have a potential buyer for this for this company. There's no intention to make this a collision shop. This is for, you know, the cars that, you know, may be stored there and need help or part of a car collection. And so it it is, the reason it's as valuable is not because of volume, but if you have to paint anything and you don't do it there, you either have to ship the car off someplace and get it back, or you have to ship the part out and get it back. And that's time consuming and expensive. So we should have had permission to put the thing up in the first place. That's that's on us. Didn't refer back to the original conditions. But at least it's up and it's up in the right way and all of the activities inside the building. I think you have a letter there from my butter, Rob Kielbasa, who virtually surrounds our operation. And he is I've talked with him extensively about this. He's, he has no problem with with the work as long as it's inside the building, which it is.
So, Mr. Sider, a quick question for you. First of all, I will publicly state that am I surprised? And the answer is no. Being a car buff myself, I remember when this came and I said, they're going to store cars, they're antique cars. You know, classic cars that people are going to want to store there, come, pick up, drive, bring back. And they say, you know, we might do some oil changes, wash them. Really not going to do anything else. I kind of said to myself back then that they'll be back because it only makes sense. It's like having a yacht, you know, you keep it at the same boatyard. And when you're done with it, you hand it to them and expect them to take care of it for you. Okay? And it's a similar thing. Am I correct?
You are. Yes, sir.
So and and I totally understand that. So the one question I do have, though, is the work that has been done or is being done, is it solely for the people that are storing their cars there, what I will call the storing clientele? Or are you also entertaining work from outside people who don't necessarily store there or have any other affiliation with the business?
Okay, I can give you, I give you a good sense of that. First of all, in terms of overall financially part of the business, the shop operation historically has been about twenty to twenty-five percent of our revenue. Within that universe, there's about ten percent that comes from outside. These are people that sometimes are storage customers. Often with the storage customers who are inside the building come in all flavors. Some people will be with us every other year. Some people come in once every three years. Some people never leave. So it's all over the map. And I, so I estimate maybe charitably five to ten percent of of any of that shop business is from outside customers or non-storage customers. Let me put it that way.
Right, Mr.
Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, if if I could just expand on that question, I have the exact same question. To to expand a little bit on the question, that five or ten percent that might be outside customers that aren't a current storage customer, they're bringing in cars that are still vintage or antique cars. In other words, my two thousand fourteen Ford F-150 isn't going to come into your shop for bodywork.
Correct.
So it's still on the lines of the vintage automobile repairs in regards to your five or ten percent outside customers.
Yes, that that's correct. I'll give you, I'll give you a great example. XJS Jaguar, it's a nineteen eighty-eight, something like that. Jaguar will not service a car that's over twenty years old. This is a place, you know, this Jaguar, if it doesn't go to us, you know, it goes to some other obscure place to to get get fixed. And but that's, that's a storage customer. We have another customer that's not a storage customer, older Mercedes. And, you know, the with all due respect to meeting and the dealers, you know, they just don't want to work on stuff that's very old.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Sider, one one last thing and a last. So the special use permit was issued fifteen years ago.
Yes, sir.
About how long ago was the was the paint booth installed?
It was installed in the fall of two thousand eighteen.
Well, two years, basically about two years ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it safe to say that the technology that was in place in two thousand five and the technology that came into play in two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen, as far as emissions from spray booths, et cetera, changed?
I can't speak to that. I I would, I would, I would think that is true. I mean, I certainly know from the Fire-X people that came in there after the booth was erected. They were in there for a long time. I can tell you also, more specifically, that the materials that we use these days go for bodywork and for paintwork are far different than they were fifteen years ago.
And to that point, I will go strictly with things that people turn to like palm sanders that now, and I will publicly not use the name of a certain brand of tool, but they almost collect, it's got to be close to ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of all dust when you're sanding something like body filler or fiberglass or things of that nature, there's like almost zero emissions, whatever, from that, correct?
That's correct. Yes, yes.
I just wanted that for the record because to me that does play into your quest. You know, for removing those two conditions, that's the technology then, the technology now, or in two thousand eighteen, is different.
Well, it's a, it's a good, it's a good point. Although I, I was, I'm not a paint booth expert myself, but I would tell you that that the filtering mechanism for anything that is sprayed within the booth is, you know, extremely elaborate. And so there's very, so not only is anything that is spraying much less toxic than it was fifteen years ago, but none of it gets out into the environment and is all collected by the filters.
I have no other questions. Do any of the other members have any questions for Mr. Sider?
Mr. Chairman, Ben Farrell, I do have a question.
I have got it.
I'm not sure if this is specific to Mr. Sider or or perhaps a general question. But but at what point does a commercial operation that's doing automobile repair become un, technically, an automobile repair business and therefore has to operate under the rules of a commercial auto repair business?
That's a good question, Mr. Farrell.
So the previous previous decision allowed for automotive repair but had the condition, they applied for a special use permit. But they, the condition was that no major bodywork was to be performed there. So I think.
So to Mr. Farrell's point, are we crossing the line?
No, I don't believe you because because of the special use permit was granted with
It was already granted.
With a restriction. However, you do need to grant a special use permit of of paint. It falls under Article Five, Section F.
Previous the 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 previous condition would allow me to, you know, change oil on automobiles. You know, anybody who pulled up.
Well, I would just speak to that because by the nature of our work, if you wanted an oil change, you'd be much more advised to go to Jiffy Lube or someplace like that. They're very, much more efficient. We don't, I don't apologize for our our rate, frankly, because we do, that is a consequence. We don't, we don't take our money on oil changes. Nature of, nature of the business. I would also make the point, over the fifteen years, the storage part of the facility occupies about eighty percent of the building. The shop is increasingly reduced because of the demand for storage. This this year, for example, just the upper half of the building will store about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five. Any given time would be large capacity. Right now, I'm not doing any work because I lost one mechanic. So we're very, very limited in terms of manpower and the kind of work we do.
Right. And Mr. Farrell, as a matter of fact, just so you know, in the ordinance, automobile repair shops, providing all work is carried out within the building, car washing establishments, paint and body shops, all specify, as long as all work is carried out within the building, are allowed by special use permit in that zone. So I just heard somebody moan inside, but I'm not sure who. Anyway. So I do remember this petition and and how it was presented to the board as more of a storage slash service facility. So yeah, with the conditions we put on it, I don't think it makes much of a difference, to be quite honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Or you have a question? I just, I'm sure the chairman is going to bring us to a conclusion before we vote. And I'm not sure if there are any other butters or interested parties, but in terms of nailing down the amended conditions, at some point, I I'd like to address the painting of vehicles and the bodywork portion in terms of amending those conditions.
Okay, well, I think, I think what I'd like to do is listen if any other members have any other questions. If there's anything, Mr. Hall, Mr. Sider, want to questions, if there's anything Mr. Hall, Mr. Sider want to add, unless for butters, then we can go condition by condition because what they're asking, what we can adjust is, I know you're probably going to propose that condition number eight where they're asking that we remove it. We may say, well, we'll agree to modify it. Okay, and go from there. Are you good with that, Mr. Sider, Mr. Hall?
Well, probably, as long as we understand, you know, I think it's important in terms of the car repair and thinking on those issues that, as I said earlier, this place is, it's like an operating room. It's so clean and it's not going to be abused anymore. And the use for the painting and repair may certainly extend to other collectible automobiles. As I think you probably know, there are some pretty high-end collectors of motor vehicles around Island now, so there may be some folks coming in for some of that work. It's all going to be geared towards trying to maintain the quality of the motor vehicles that are already there. I don't think you have to worry about turning this thing into a body shop or a paint shop.
Mr. Hall, let me interrupt you. Why don't we go along this route? Why don't I see if there's any other members with questions, butters or interested parties? And then we'll take each condition one at a time.
Fine.
And if there's a member that feels that we shouldn't remove the condition but modify it, we can discuss that and see if you're in favor of that or not, in which case, then that would direct the board how to vote on that particular thing. So let's take for the sake of it that, and I'm just using this as an example, where it says no external storage, and one member says, well, I, you know, I think we're better off just not eliminating, but let's say it's limited to six, no more than six pieces of whatever. And you may say, no, we want no storage. Well, then the board knows how to vote. Or you may say, yeah, we're agreeable to an amended condition like that, in which case the board could vote on that.
Right.
Is that, is that?
Sure, that makes sense. That's good.
Okay, all right. So let me proceed on. Are there any other members that have any questions from Mr. Sider or Mr. Hall at all?
Uh, no, I do have one thing I'd like to say. Well, I'll wait for the conditions and I'll mention it then, never mind.
That sounds good. Eric, how about you?
He's muted.
Mr. Reposey, you're muted.
Sorry, my mouse was low. No questions.
Okay.
Thanks, sorry about that.
All right, that being said, I'm going to ask for any of butters or interested parties that would like to speak on this. Is there anyone? If so, you can raise your hand.
If you're on the Zoom app, you can use the raise hand button, or if you're calling in, you can raise your hand by dialing our number.
Okay. See, now I do have a letter on file from Robert J. Cabassa, Fifty Long Shore Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, Honorable Chairman, Portsmouth Zoning Board Review, dated November seventeenth, two thousand twenty. I am the owner of lots twenty-six and thirty-two on map thirty-eight, both of which immediately abuts property of SBC Realty LLC. I have reviewed the petition of Stephen Sider, applicant, SBC Realty LLC, the owner, and I've discussed it with Mr. Sider. I would like to offer my support for the petition. Mr. Sider has always been a very responsible and respectable neighbor and property owner in Portsmouth Business Park. I hope you see fit to grant his request to amend his special use permit. Sincerely, Robert J. Cabassa. All right. That being said, we have Stephen Sider, applicant, SBC owner, before the board, asking to modify some previously placed conditions on a special use permit that was granted to SBC Realty in July of two thousand five. So we're going to take, for the board members, we're going to take each condition one at a time and we'll vote on it one at a time by roll call. So condition four is consuming dumpster landscaping. Which they're asking that we remove that condition.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in favor of removing that condition. I think the petitioners also agreed that they could rebuild the the screening for the dumpster either with reinforced materials so they don't get destroyed. And I think they're willing to comply with that and leave that condition in place. I don't want to set a precedent when we're having other petitioners come in front of us, commercial, industrial, or otherwise, where we ask them to screen and then we remove this condition from the previously approved special use permit.
Okay. For the record, I will read what that condition stated. It said, the dumpster or any refuse containers should be enclosed or concealed by landscaping. So it didn't specify where on the property, it just said needs to be screened. Mr. Hall, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't think so. I think we can live with that, and I think that's fine.
All right, so let me take board members one at a time. So the request to remove the condition for consuming dumpster with landscaping.
Mr. Borden, I would deny the request and request that the condition remain in effect.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to have that condition remain in effect.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis?
I concur with Mr. Borden.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reposey.
I concur with Mr. Borden as well.
All right, thank you. The chairman also votes to concur and concurs with Mr. Borden, so that condition will remain in effect. Okay, so let's go to the next condition, condition number eight, no external storage.
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that we amend that condition to allow storage of, for six items, i.e. boats, trailers, containers, and that it be in the, was it the north of the property, behind the building, that's not visible from the main road. The butter has no issues. It is a business park. There are other businesses that have external storage. So I think it's reasonable. I think the, six is not excessive. And in a lot of cases, it's ancillary and it's not a storage facility.
Okay, Mr. Hall.
We can live with that. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So Mr. Borden is proposing that condition number eight be modified and amended to allow no more than six items, be it boats, trailers, cars, storage containers, et cetera, be allowed on the north side of the property out of view from the highway. So, Mr. Borden?
I vote to approve as amended. Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
Chairman, I vote to approve as amended.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis?
I just have one question. Is there any limit to the size of these things, or like, is it six tractor-trailer trucks, or does that not matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, then I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Reposey?
I also vote to approve for reasons explicitly stated by my peers.
Chairman, supposed to move the amended condition placed by Mr. Borden. Okay, so now we get to condition nine. I don't know if we want to take condition nine and ten together. Makes sense. Mr. Hall, you agree?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, okay. So condition nine, no painting of vehicles or boats and no bodywork. Is there any discussion by any board members on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a shot at amending condition nine and condition ten, that the painting and bodywork be ancillary, and I think the petitioner mentioned, the last couple of years, they've done like four cars. So I would say if we, if we were to limit it to ten cars per year, would that be a hardship?
I had, actually, this is Steve Sider, I'd actually anticipated that kind of discussion. And I thought what would be reasonable would be one per month.
Twelve, twelve, okay. That is reasonable, I think.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I mean, one per month, clearly, that you're not a collision auto body shop that's going to stay in business if you're doing one a month. And I would also like to add that the customers be limited to vintage or collectible vehicles as opposed to someone off the street.
That one, by and large, I think we can live with that. I wouldn't be less than honest if I didn't say, it'd be hard to live that, up to that a hundred percent. It'd be easy to live up to it ninety percent. But, you know, I just think about a couple of customers that we've had, they're friends of their part of the place, they come to us because they can't get the dealer to service, and so they rely on us. They're not necessarily storage customers, very few. But if we could fix a fender for them, we'd like to do it.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, so what's your amended petition?
So let me take another shot at this. The amended petition would be that in, let's say, ninety percent of the cases, your painting and bodywork would be associated with vintage vehicles, existing customers or outside customers that you would be doing work on their vintage automobiles. And no more than one per month.
Yeah, we live with that, yeah.
Acceptable?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Ben Farrell. Would it be perhaps less ambiguous, just to say twelve per year, and then it can be anybody?
Yeah, no, I don't, that's fine. I, you're right, Mr. Farrell, we could just limit it to no more than twelve per year, so.
Away from ninety percent of something or?
Yeah, I agree. That's a better phrasing of the condition. I'm comfortable with this business.
All right, so then amended, if approved, the amended conditions nine and ten would be that any painting of vehicles or boats and bodywork would be limited to no more than twelve vehicles per year. That sound reasonable?
Second.
Okay, so we have to vote on this individually, so. Mr. Borden, condition nine, condition ten, be modified so that it is the painting of vehicles or boats and bodywork be limited to no more than twelve vehicles slash boats or and or boats per year.
Oh, to approve as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
Chairman, I vote to approve as amended.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis?
I also vote to approve as amended.
Okay, Mr. Reposey?
I also vote to approve as amended.
Okay, and the chairman votes to approve as amended as well. So your conditions have been all voted on. You're all set.
Okay, well, I would just want to say thanks to the board, and I want to also thank you to Mike Askewola, who has been very helpful in this process, by the way.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Sider, also thank you for being very upfront and honest with the board and, you know, not sugarcoating or putting anything up with a smoking mirror, shall we say. I very much appreciate that.
I second the chairman's thoughts on that. I also have respect for you for being straightforward.
Smoking mirrors have never worked very well for me.
They generally come back to haunt you.
I want to.
Oh, hang on a second.
This is Joe Hall. I just want to thank all of you for your time. Appreciate it and wish you the happiest of holidays.
All right, hang on one second.
I think we approved the changes to the restrictions, but we didn't actually approve the special use permit.
We don't have to.
It wasn't approved before though.
What do you mean? We're just modifying the conditions of the special use permit. The original special use permit was allowed.
No, not for the painting. The painting and the bodywork are different.
No, those were conditions we placed on it.
I know, but did you approve the bodies or the automobile repair shop before? It was separate from the painting.
Not a hundred percent.
Not a hundred percent, we're on this here.
Nothing, I don't trust you.
No, because the entire applicant fell under automotive, even back in two thousand five, it fell under it. So we go back to the original conditions. Bear with us, Mr. Hall, Mr. Sider.
Okay.
The F three is the automotive repair shops, but F six is the paint body.
Why don't you just?
I also have this as well back then. Yeah, we granted that. The testimony back then was given that they would have clientele that would drive in and would change their oil, that would wash their cars, et cetera. Yeah, so we approved that. So that comes under next.
You approved F three, F four,
So now what do we have to approve?
A special use permit for the paint.
Okay. We're still not quite done. We still have to approve the special use permit with the condition placed on it for the paint booth. So that is simply a special use permit vote to allow that. So I will read the special use permit criteria. Hang on. Okay, so special use permit, desired use will not be detrimental to surrounding area, it will be compatible with neighborhood land uses, will not create nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood, adequate protection is afforded surrounding property by the use of local space and planning, safe vehicle or access and adequate parking are provided, control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and any other objectionable features provided, sole rights to the butters are provided for, and the proposed special use will be in performance with purposes and intent of comprehensive plan zone ordinance of the town of Portsmouth, and the health, safety, and welfare of the community are protected. Again, this is to allow the painting in there with the placed condition on it that it be no more than twelve vehicles or boats per year. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, I approve the special use permit. I just listened to everything that you read in terms of special use criteria. This is not going to be a nuisance or a hazard. The paint and body shop has been inspected by FireX, it's met all the regulatory requirements, it's indoors, it's not a danger to the abutting properties, and is not going to create a health risk. This is an industrial park, it's compatible with the comprehensive plan, the butter on both sides is supportive of this petition, and I think it meets all the criteria for special use approval, and I vote to approve. and I think it meets all the criterion for special use approval, and I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve for the reasons cited by Mr. Board.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Lachas.
I agree with Mr. Board and Mr. Furell, and I vote to approve as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reposa?
I also vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thanks, sir. And the chairman also votes to reasons previously stated. So now you're totally approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we'll have one more before we take a break. So, the next item on the agenda is a petition by Chris Bagan, Fred Suser, and Sherri Field. I know, I believe Mr. Chappell is on, and is going to ask for a continuance on that, is that correct?
I should be on.
You are on, Mr. Chappell.
How are you all?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. The only thing I wanted to do, I am asking for a continuance. Just give me one minute, I'll just explain why.
Okay.
I wonder if you could just pull up the site plan so everyone was, could see it?
We don't have it.
Oh, all right. Well, let me just tell you that for those of you that looked at it, it might have been a tall order. It was a fairly good-sized house on a fairly small lot. There were concerns for views, and there were a number of variances that would have been required. But the owner owns the next lot next door, and one was much bigger than the other. So rather than seek variances, we're in front of the planning board, we plan to be there in January, to make the lot that this house is on bigger, and to greatly reduce. We're still going to need, I think, because we have two front yards, a variance on one of the roads. But we won't need the lot coverage, and we won't need anywhere near the size of the variances that we would have needed. It's still an unique lot, there's still some engineering issues, but by making it two or 3,000 feet bigger, we eliminate many of the problems that I would have had to try to pitch to you. So, when it comes back, the way we have to file for it, or we have filed for a creative subdivision. That lot cannot be changed as a matter of course. In fact, we're going to hear a petition at the end of the night that's almost identical, because when you have two non-conforming lots and you add land to one, even though you're making the small one bigger, you're technically making the bigger lot less conforming. So, we're going to be in front of you to, with the planning board hopefully saying, we would like to change the lot lines, and we recommend that you do it. And then the petition that you will have, and I'll file some new plans, will have much, much less variances than you would have had to look at tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, your request we continue this to January, correct?
That is correct.
Right. So, could I have a motion that we continue the petition of Chris Bagan, Fred Suser, and Sherri Field owners, excuse me, to our regularly scheduled meeting of January 21st, 2021?
Mr. Chairman, I approve the petition by Chris Bagan, we continue to our meeting in January of the 21st.
And could I have a second to that?
Second, Kathy speaking.
Thank you. In favor, Mr. Board?
I'm in favor, I vote to approve the continuance, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the continuance.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Lachas.
I vote to approve the continuance.
And Mr. Reposa?
I also vote to approve.
Chairman does as well. So, Mr. Chappell, before you go, under new business item seven, if I'm not mistaken, the petition of Kristen Miller, you're also representing that one and going to ask for a continuance as well, is that correct?
That is correct, there's a new set of plans that have been provided, and that will go to January as well.
All right, so, while I have you, and for the board members, item number seven on the new business petition of Kristen Miller owner, who is seeking dimensional variance, let's see, on a non-conforming lot located 34 Aquinic Avenue, which is lot 245166, we're requesting to continue to January, could I have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we continue the petition by Kristen Miller to our January 21st zoning board meeting.
Thank you, may I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Bob Lachas, seconds. Mr. Board in favor of?
Yes, Mr. Board votes in favor to continue the petition to January.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to continue the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Lachas.
I vote to continue the petition.
Mr. Reposa?
I also vote to approve.
Chairman also votes to continue as well, so that's been continued as well, Mr. Chappell.
Okay, thank you. I will see you later on six and eight as well, but thank you.
If we get there.
If we get there. I'll be watching, and if we don't get there, Merry Christmas to all of you.
Same to you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda under new business is a petition by Stephen and Ann Perry, owners under Tax Assessor's Map 1, Lot 16, requesting to locate some outdoor utilities on the north side of their hall. Are the Perrys on? They are?
Yes.
Okay, so individually, could you raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, could you give your full names and address to Bob, please?
Stephen Perry, we currently live at 73 Viking Drive in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And Ann Perry currently living at 73 Viking Drive, but 1277 is our residence being renovated.
Okay, so, why don't you go ahead and explain to the board what you'd like to do, or what you're looking for?
Okay, we purchased a property late June, and we were before the board in August for a dimensional variance found an extension that we were putting in to enclose the outdoor stairs, I don't know if you recall that. It was approved differently under construction, so thank you for that. I guess we didn't notice at the time that we definitely have anywhere to put air conditioning condensers, the entire neighborhood propane tanks for their fuel, it's not oil. And the only place that we have available for that is on the north side property. The west side is the street, and there's only, you know, short distance, it's unraised, so there's no room there. The south side of the property is driveway there, and the septic tank as well. And then the back of the property is the leach field for the septic. And our property is right up against the, there's a common family and associate land, and then state land beyond that. So there's really nowhere else to put the things we're talking about within the north side. So the lot, I want to say is six feet wide or something like that. And because it's less than the setback requirement, that's why we're before now to request a variance to allow us to locate the utilities along that north side of the house.
Okay, so, basically, you're looking at to install your generator and HVAC equipment. So, let me start with my area of expertise, which is the HVAC equipment. So, what is being proposed to be installed? Are you installing what we call the hyper type heat pumps that are both heating and cooling?
No, heating system is a traditional, you know, in this case propane boiler with hydro reactors.
Right.
Inside ductwork, it'll be a pot air system, and then the same ductwork has in it the air coils or whatever they are with this condenser on the outside.
It's just a conventional condenser.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is a coastal property, and it's in a flood zone. Those air conditioning condensed generators are going to have to be elevated somewhat off the ground.
Right.
And the little sketch that I provided also showed some propane bottles, and those are traditionally on a conch slab. Is the lot coverage change on here, which is like a three foot, six foot slab. So 18 additional square would be concrete.
And I have to assume that the propane bottles besides heat are also for the generator?
The generator and the stove, gas range as well.
Okay. I guess the biggest question is, any sound? Is there any plans to screen the condensing unit to minimize the sound? Put out to that, to the abutting neighbor?
Yeah, I mean, there haven't, to be honest, the neighbor to the north, this is the garage side of the house, so there's no living space for like 50 or 60 feet from where the conditioning, condenser is basically. He's got a bit of a driveway, and then a garage living on the other side of that. So, I guess it's drawn on there. What we see in the drawing here that's on the screen right now is the very edge of his garage, so the living house is not really depicted there.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions.
So this picture here is showing the, to the left side, I just scrolled a bit too far, but you can see the neighbor's garage there.
We have those pictures, correct?
Yeah, they're scrolling here, so this lattice work there, looking at on the right, is basically an enclosed exterior stairwell of the neighbors. And then the garage is beyond that, and then the other side of that.
Okay. All right, does, any questions from any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman, it's probably going to be a stupid question, and that is, I'm guessing all of these tanks have to be located outdoors, it can't be located indoors?
Certainly outdoors, yeah. And in addition, they have to be, you know, a certain distance back from the electrical server, which is a quoting source, which comes into that upper corner of the structure. The propane tanks also, and it's 10 feet, it has to be 10 feet from the generator or the condensers or whatever.
And they have to be away from a window as well, so we kind of.
Yeah.
Where you can put them.
Yeah, exactly. So the window that that sort of system in front of is, it'll be fixed so that it can't open.
Right.
We had sunshine and fills propane out, kind of looks the space, and, you know, without going into a great amount of detail, said, yeah, it's quite right to locate these things along there and maintaining the distances from the sources and whatnot.
Okay, any other board members have any questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Perry, how many things will be there? You know, how many condensers, condensers, and then is a generator one?
Yeah, so the plan is two condensers, there's one for each floor of the house, generator, and either two or three propane balls. I'm leaning towards two, the contractors, both the contractors, but the propane guys suggested that we have three. This particular lot is on sort of the single lane portion of Anthony Road, or out on the park, and it's the only way in or out. So they said, you know, if there is a failure or whatever, and we can't get out to you, trees down across the street, yada, 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 they suggested we have three there. So, to answer your question, there could be these things along there, I guess.
Okay, and I do notice that the house immediately to the south of you, they also have a condenser on the side of their house that abuts your property.
Correct, they also have propane bottles, I mean, that's right in this area. Quite a number of the homes have generators and propane bottles and air conditioning. So they all have this kind of thing.
Yeah, looking around the neighborhood, there are quite a few homes that have, you know, they're all rather small lots, and more than one of them has propane tanks for sure. Thank you.
Okay, before I go to abutters or interested parties, one thing I am going to do is, so, Mr. and Mrs. Perry, as part of this, because you are a substandard lot of record, requires a, requires you to conform to special use permit criteria, certain ones is five questions. So I'm going to ask you five questions, just sort of yes or no answers. So, if this were allowed, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
No.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I just have to ask for abutters or interested parties that may want to speak on this. Is there?
So if you're on the Zoom app, you can raise your hand now, or if you're calling in, you can dial star nine, raise your hand. We have no one.
And we have none. So, that being said, Stephen and Ann Perry before the board for Tax Assessor's Map 1, Lot 16, requesting a special use permit because they are a substandard lot of record, and also a 15-foot front yard variance and a nine-foot side yard variance for the purpose of installing propane bottles, HVAC condensing units, and a generator at their property. So, Mr. Board, if you want to take both of those?
Mr. Chairman, I just might add, they're also proposing to increase the lot coverage by 0.5 of 1%.
You are correct, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the dimensional variance requirements first. Certainly, utilities, heat, HVAC, is necessary for residents. And to deny would certainly amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. It's minimal, the slab is going to be three feet by six feet. So I vote to approve the front yard variance of 15 feet and the side yard variance of nine feet, as well as the addition in lot coverage of 0.5%. I also listened to the petitioners respond to all of the special use permit criterion for substandard lot of record, and they meet the criterion, and it is not a concern to me. So I also vote to approve the special use.
Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the front and side yard variance and the increase in lot coverage. And I also vote to approve the special use permit for the reason cited by Mr. Board.
Thank you, Ms. Bob Lachas.
I agree with Mr. Board and Mr. Furell, and I vote to approve the both side yard variance, both yard variances and the special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I also vote to approve both variances.
And what about special use permit?
And special use permit, sorry.
And the chairman votes to approve the special use permit and both front and side yard variances and the increased lot coverage. To Mr. Furell's point, there's many houses, neighbors in this area that have similar items or identical items on the side of the yard, the lots are small, and it's required for the HVAC for life safety thing. So I believe to deny does amount to more than an emergency, so it has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Merry Christmas. The board is going to take a five-minute break. We'll call it 25 minutes before nine, we will reconvene at 20 minutes till nine. And the next item on the agenda is going to be the petition of Patrick Joyce.
What are you doing on there?
Okay, the zoning board review is back in session. Make sure we've got everybody here. All members online. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a petition by Patrick Joyce Row four, uh, I'm sorry, ten fourteen Middle Road Tax Assessor's Map Fifty-seven Lot One Sixty-four. Requesting a lot covered variance of one point five percent. And a twenty-two foot rear yard variance. And also a special use permit as I believe it's a substandard lot of record that trying to figure out why it's special.
Yeah.
Right, so is Mr. Joyce is on?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Mr. Joyce, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Well, name and address for Bob, please.
Patrick C. Joyce and I reside at ten fourteen Middle Road in Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, Mr. Joyce, why don't you go ahead and explain to the board what you're, you would like to do?
Absolutely. No, thanks for, thanks for your time in contemplating our request for this variance, uh, for the deck in our backyard at, at ten fourteen Middle Road. So as you may have seen in the notes, um, our total lot size is seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet, so just around four tenths of an acre, and the home itself, it's set back towards the, the middle back portion of the lot. So this placement of the home, the options that we'd be able to, to have for our backyard as it pertains to location for the deck. And so as you see, kind of given the placement of, of the home, um, our lot being zoned R twenty, and then our home being located on a busier traffic area with Middle Road right there, that's where we're requesting the variance for, um, for that deck in, in the backyard. The reason for those dimensions, there was an existing patio that was in place when we purchased the home back in September. Um, and so we are, we thought that the best look for the deck would be to follow that depth of that, uh, patio that was already in place from home. We believe that, that patio had been in place since, uh, the home was constructed back in, in two thousand and four, so at, um, existing currently, and then the privacy trees that are already in place there, I believe there's seven total. We've actually planted an additional five there for any potential sound or privacy issues for any of our neighbors. We thought that that was really the best placement, uh, for the deck, um, on the, on the property, and we do have two younger children that are very active, so trying to, to make the best use of the backyard to, to make sure that we can enjoy it safely and secure, um, just to kind of make sure that they have a fun place to, to be able to play in the, the backyard there, and then just really to overall improve the aesthetic of what was there when we purchased the home, uh, to be a little bit more in line with the entire Lilac Lane neighborhood and, and what our buddy neighbors, uh, currently have as well.
Okay, and I am looking at a narrow view of that, and I see that patio you're talking about is right, it's almost right the driveway of the house patio, and just to clarify, you're basically looking to put the deck where the patio is?
Correct, yeah, so the depth would match where the, the patio is on that aerial shot, and we are going to go a little bit further to the, I guess it would be the northeast portion of the lot, so that would just stay in line with where the house is.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I have a question. So, um, I'm looking at your lot coverage page that you submitted with your petition. And, uh, is the, is the patio still in place or is the patio removed?
So we have, we had removed that, so we're working in conjunction with, uh, Premier of Landscaping, and that's where we started doing some of the, the site work there. And we did not realize that the, the variance, uh, would have need to have been pulled, and so that's where we stopped any site work there and began this process.
Okay, so in terms of your existing, and, and I, I guess you, how big is the patio?
It, it went, I guess it was about twenty-four feet deep. And I would guess, um, that it was probably about twelve feet wide or so.
Okay, alright, so really, had you not removed it, then what you would have done would be include the patio in your existing lot coverage, even though it's not really a structure under the ordinance, it does count as, uh, as being included in the lot coverage. So had you done that, you're saying right now that your existing lot coverage is eighteen point two, but actually it's, it would have been higher than that had the patio still been in place. And then you would have subtracted out the patio because you already removed it. I, I, it's, you're requesting minimal lot coverage. I'm just trying to, I guess, help you out by saying
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, and, uh, I'll, I'll admit this is my first time ever going through this process, and like Ask Yola, uh, with the town has been, has been great in helping me out, and he was kind of the one who helped, I think, guide me to what that number was. Um, so if that was an error, that was, um, not intentional.
That's fine. I'm, I'm good. I'm good. Any other questions? Okay. Anything else you'd like to, to add at all?
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing that I'd add, um, would just be, yeah, so we planted some additional trees there. We actually did some additional landscaping as far as plants and, uh, some other bushes, uh, just to increase any privacy issues or potential, uh, problems, um, with any butters. So we're trying to be proactive in that regard as well.
Okay, so I do have to ask you, because you are considered a substandard lot of record. There is, I do have to ask you five questions that pertain to the special use permit criteria required. So if this were allowed, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Would it still provide adequate light and air between the buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
Uh, no, I think it'd only, uh, help.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
I don't believe so, no.
Would it impose substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from any other board members regarding this?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for Mr. Joyce.
Go ahead, Mr. Farrell.
Uh, sir, uh, comparing the new patio to the patio that was there, you're, you're extending the new patio a little bit further north?
Uh, Mr. Farrell, let me interrupt just for the record, is they're not extending the patio, they've removed the patio but are installing a deck where the patio was.
Oh. Uh, uh, okay, I was just trying to get a feel for how much bigger is the, is the resulting structure vice the, um,
I just wanted to clarify that they removed the patio, but they're, uh, proposing to install a deck.
Okay, alright, never mind. None. Thank you.
No, if, go ahead. If I could quickly, the petitioner stated that the patio that was removed was twenty-four by twelve. So that means if they're adding twelve by twenty-four, they're expanding the footprint two hundred and eighty-eight square feet.
Right, the, so, Mr. Farrell, the patio was twelve by twenty-four, the proposed deck is twenty-four by twenty-four.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions? Alright. See, none. I will ask for others or interested parties. Do you have any mic?
Again, if you're using the Zoom app, you can raise your hand. We have no more callers on. I don't see anyone, so.
Okay, and we have no letters on the file, so Patrick Joyce is before this board for Tax Assessor's Map Fifty-seven Lot One Sixty-four. Requesting a one point five percent lot coverage variance and a twenty-two foot rear yard variance and also a special use permit as they are a substandard lot of record for the purpose of installing a deck, uh, on this property. So, Mr. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the special use permit first. Petitioner walked through all the criterion and meets all the criterion for special use permit for a substandard lot of record, so I vote to approve. In regards to the dimension relief, the twenty-two foot variance might seem excessive. However, this house is situated way back on the lot, and there's landscaping in place, a deck is a reasonable permitted accessory use to fully enjoy the property and to deny would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. Lot coverage is minimal in terms of the relief they're seeking at one point five percent. I think to deny would amount to more than a mere inconvenience, so I vote to approve the twenty-two foot rear yard variance as well as the one point five percent lot coverage variance.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record, and I vote to approve both the lot coverage variance and the rear.
Thank you. Ms. Bobakis?
I also vote to approve the special use permit and both the, uh, lot coverage and the, um, distance variance.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa? Mr. Reposa, I think you're muted.
It's like it's my first time.
There you go. Go ahead, Mr. Reposa.
I also approve the, uh, the variance and, uh, both variance and lot coverage.
And how about special use permit?
A special use permit too, you could.
Thank you very much. The chairman votes to approve the special use permit for substandard lot of record and also the lot coverage and rear yard variance, which was previously stated by Mr. Board, so you're all set, Mr. Joyce. Have a merry Christmas.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, the next item on the agenda is petitioned by Nellie Kuter for Tax Assessor's Map, bear with me, I gotta get this out here. Tax Assessor's Map Four Lot One O Seven. I'm seeking a special use permit as they are a substandard lot of record and also a uh, let's see, a nine point two one percent, nine point two foot rear yard variance and a thirteen point three foot front yard variance and a six point six five lot coverage variance. For the purpose of adding a garage to their property. Anyone here representing Nellie Kuner?
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, there we are. Hi, yes, I'm here with Nellie Kuner.
Okay, who's speaking?
This is Gary De Silva, I'm her son-in-law.
Okay, Gary, swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, your full name and address for the record, please?
Do you want my full address or my mother-in-law's full address?
Of course, as you are speaking for her.
Okay, so my name is Gary De Silva, I live at 55 Mays Corn Road.
Mr. Chairman, this, I hate to be a stickler, but do we need a letter or some authorization?
She was on the call a minute ago. Also someone who has the hand raised named Helder, I don't know her last name. We'll allow them to talk, maybe, maybe that's the applicant.
Okay, so, Mr. De Silva, do you know if Ms. Kuner is gone?
Yes, Helder Kuner is my mother-in-law's nephew.
Okay, so. Is she there?
Yeah, my mother-in-law, yeah, she's right here.
Oh, she's with you?
Yes, yes, I am.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you. Okay, Mr. De Silva, go ahead and explain this, I know this came before us, not too long ago, the number of variances and now it's back again.
Yeah, so the first time I, we appeared before you all, we didn't realize that what we were requesting was only a 15 by 15 garage. Until someone on the committee mentioned that it's kind of small, as soon as our meeting was over, I literally went out to the backyard and to the yard, I should say, and just measured my mother-in-law's car. It was like 15 feet right there. So we knew right there and then that was gonna be too small of a garage. So that's why we're back before you all now to request a 23 by 16, it's like an oversized one-car garage, which will allow my mother-in-law to fit the ride-on lawnmower and the snow blower, including her car as well.
Okay, so basically what you want to do is modify, you're not asking for anything different from the original other than a bigger garage?
Correct, and we're not, and there's an existing deck that we were gonna use the previous time, but we're gonna take it down and not use it at all.
Okay, alright. Let's see. And I'm just, bear with me, I'm just reading the previous decision that was back in May.
Yep.
So for the record on that was myself, Mr. Board, Ms. Pavlakis and Mr. Madico. Let's see. Alright, so it's basically more the width than anything else. I mean, the other was 15 by 15, this is what, 24 and a half by 16, 23 by 16?
23 by 16, correct.
Alright, okay, got it. I do remember this, I do also, yeah, so I don't have any questions, I understand why you're back.
Yeah.
My shed is not much smaller than the proposed garage one.
There you go.
Alright, Mr. Furell, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, how about Ms. Pavlakis? Kathleen?
Sorry about that, no, I do not.
Okay, Mr. Reposa, do you have any questions?
I don't this time.
Okay, so Mr. De Silva, before, before we vote, I do, for the record, have to run back over these special use criteria because it is a substandard lot of record.
I understand.
So would this still allow for adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Would it provide adequate lighting air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect neighboring property?
No.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks, lessen the average lot coverage and setbacks in adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Okay, thank you. So for the record, Nellie Kuner is before this board for Tax Assessor's map for lot 107. Seeking a 9.2 foot rear yard variance. And a 13.3 foot front yard variance. And a 6.65% lot coverage variance for the purpose of installing a 23 by 16 foot garage on her property. Mr. Board?
Mr. Chairman, did we ask for butters in interest?
I did.
Okay, just.
Yeah, there are no, and there are no letters in the.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the special use permit criteria first, the petitioner walked through all under the ordinance with the chairman and petitioner, in my opinion, has met all the criteria for approval. I vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record. In regards to the rear yard variance to the south of 9.2 feet, the front yard variance to the west on Greenfield Street. Petitioner is constrained by having to be two front setbacks, the requested variance is 13.3 feet. I vote to approve those variances and I also vote to approve the 6.65 lot coverage variance. The lot is only 6,800 square feet. A garage is a reasonable accessory use. And so essentially a one-car garage, oversized for a mower and snow blower and certainly a reasonable request to have room for storage of those items. And I understand why the petitioner's back so she can place her car in the garage. The previous petition due to an oversight of the garage would not have been large enough to store the car. To deny would amount to more than a merit and convenience, and I vote to approve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record. The front and rear yard variances, dimensional variances, and the lot cover variance for the reasons cited by Mr. Board.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis?
I concur with Mr. Board and Mr. Furell, and I vote to approve the special use permit, the front and rear yard variances and the lot coverage.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa?
I also approve the front and rear lot coverage, the special use permit and the lot coverage.
Alrighty, thank you very much. The chairman also votes to approve the special use permit and a substandard lot of record. And also the dimensional variances and lot coverage variance requested, so it has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice holiday.
Thank you, you as well, be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda moving right along is petitioned by Joseph and Christine Sisto. And forgive me if I'm not pronouncing right, Frigale, seeking dimensional variance in front and front yard setback and lot coverage. On Tax Assessor's map 3, lot 25, is Joseph and Christine on?
They're on.
Yes.
They are on, raise your right hands. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, do we have your full names and addresses individually for our records, please?
Christine De Sisto Frigale, River Island Boulevard, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 02871.
And Joseph Raymond Frigale, River Island Boulevard, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, thanks. So please go ahead and explain to the board what you'd like to do.
Sure. You know, thank you everyone for taking a look at our variance. And also my parents, Gail and Nick De Sisto are on, so if you wouldn't mind unmuting them too. I'll say a couple of things, but I know they want to speak as well. Just, I guess, a little bit of background on this lot before we get going. Long story short, my husband and I and our two young daughters were quarantining with my parents over the summer. And we realized pretty quickly that family was real important and especially with COVID and the pandemic and everything, we wanted to be closer to our family. And what ended up happening was a lot near my parents went up for sale. And we kind of joked about buying it at one point and then it just turned into a family decision to purchase that lot. Because it could be perfect for my parents to downsize. So they're getting, you know, a little bit older and I get quite frankly pretty nervous when I hear stories of mom and dad on the roof and fixing leaks here and there and going up and down all kinds of steps. So we thought this was really a great opportunity to build them a smaller house that they could really kind of age in place. Less maintenance, a safer, a safer house where their bedroom could be on the first floor. So I guess that's kind of some of the background and then the other twist to the story was that this also would allow us to move up to Rhode Island to be closer to them. So where, we were in Virginia and now we actually ended up selling our house and moving up here. So this is where we are now to be closer to my parents and they can be closer to their grandkids and and we're hoping to be able to, you know, live near them and help them out as they age. So that's really why we're looking to obtain this variance for the lot coverage is to just have enough square footage to get them a bedroom on the first floor. But I know my parents wanted to say a thing or two, if you wouldn't mind unmuting Gail De Sisto. Mom, are you there?
Yeah, she's gotta unmute herself.
Mom, click the button.
Okay, got it.
Hold on.
Just, just for the record, good, we asked Gail and I was with Gail, we're gonna speak as well. Could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, it's Gail and Nick De Sisto at 3 Rhode Island Boulevard.
Okay, so first of all, do you know your daughter speaks of you like you're 100 years old?
Well, we're getting close.
Sympathize with you because my kids do the same, so, but, go ahead.
We're happy that they're concerned.
Yes, so Gail, go ahead, what would you like to say?
Well, we are getting older, I did turn 70 last month. And we wanted to say that we're thrilled with Joe and Christine moving in our house and building us a downsized house next door. We, after looking at quite a few house plans, we realized pretty soon that we needed to go for this variance because we really need to live on one level and have the bedroom on the one level. So we thought, we wanted to go grow old in this house and we thought it was a reasonable request to age in place and have the bedroom on the first floor as a priority to be able to do that. I have personally had a lot of my friends fall downstairs this year alone, there were three. We live in Common Fence Point and three of those friends were in Common Fence Point. I had taken one to the doctors last week and she had fallen down the stairs. Her name's Barbara and she had five broken ribs and a broken pelvis and a broken clavicle. And she's, she's actually on the mend, but you know, Joe's mother also, same thing, fell down the stairs and was in a wheelchair for 12 weeks. So we're really trying to avoid those kind of things and live on one level. And, you know, have the quality of life of being able to live right next to our daughter and our son-in-law and and that's about it, I think. Nick wanted to say something.
Yeah, hi, thank you, thank you for your time. My name is Nicholas De Sisto, my age is 72. I'm a veteran and as my wife said, we've been living in Common Fence Point now for over 40 years. And we love the community, we stay here. And this new house gives us an opportunity to downsize and as my wife said, age in place, to live on one floor. Yeah, our current home has a lot of stairs and, you know, we fear falling down, so that's about it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, so going back to Joseph and Christine, are you there? Okay, so continue on, so you're looking for front yard and lot coverage variance. Let me ask you a question about the front yard variance for the record, okay? So you're asking for 13.2 foot front yard variance, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
That's to the property line, correct?
Correct.
What is it to the edge of the road?
20.
Another 10 feet, am I correct?
Yeah, I think it's another 18, 18.2.
From the property line.
From the property line to the road. So, yeah, that's just kind of how the lots in, I'm sure you know this, in Common Fence Point were set up, is we have a very large setback from the edge of Berkeley to the property line.
Well, every, the roads were intended, I think, to be 60 feet wide down the average.
It's a highway, yeah.
Which we all know, having sat on this board for years, that they will never line those roads, so half the time your telephone poles are 10 feet away from the road and they're closer to a house, am I correct? That's probably the situation there?
Yes.
That's correct.
Although you're seeking a 13.2 foot variance to your property line, you're actually probably, really, if you went to the edge of the road, you would conform, correct?
Yes, more than 20.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in, in the package, under the explanation for front setback, it states that the proposed house will be set back approximately 25 feet from the road.
Right, so there's the point right there, okay. And the only other thing you're asking for is a 6.9% lot coverage variance where if I listen to your parents, you could probably build a house that would conform except for the fact that it would probably have to be a two-level structure, correct?
Correct, and the intent is to have this as a two-level structure, but just to keep the second floor really minimal just for when my sister or my brother and their grand, and our other grandkids want to visit. But really, we need to keep them on the first floor and then just have the second floor for visitors is the intent, a small second floor.
I don't have any further questions, you, Mr. Board?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Board?
John Board, I have a couple of questions. How many bedrooms are you proposing for the structure?
One downstairs and then two small ones upstairs.
So it'll be a three-bedroom house then, a three-bedroom ISDS septic system?
We're not sure what ISDS is.
That means individual sewage disposal system, DEM, Department of Environmental Management has to approve all septic systems, so I guess, I'm guessing you're proposing a three-bedroom septic system?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the other question I have is, I noticed that your plan has a proposal for a porch and a patio. Did you include the patio in your lot coverage?
No, we did not, we were under the impression if it was just pavers that it does not count, it's not a raised patio, it's just some pavers on the ground that per the zoning ordinance, it did not count.
Well, unfortunately, I agree that it doesn't make any sense because it's not a structure. And hopefully, when the revised plan is approved and the zoning ordinance is amended, that will no longer be included in lot coverage, but right now, under our ordinance, the patio, even though it's ground level, has to be included in your lot coverage request.
Okay, so then I guess we would probably need to remove the patio then.
Well, I'm not, well, you could either remove it or quick calculate it and you could amend your petition tonight to request whatever that additional lot coverage is.
Absolutely, that's acceptable, we would absolutely love.
I think Mr. Board is calculating it quick here.
It'd be 15 by 20.
15. Yeah.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, it's like I have to subtract out that other portion, so. So let me just do some math here.
Bear with us.
We're, we're going to cross check too.
Like, like around 260 square feet? Just because the corner of the house takes away from a little of it.
Correct. Correct. You're right. That's what I'm calculating now. Must be engineers.
Yeah, we're doing 10.5 times 20 plus 4.5 times.
But just to confirm, so the driveway does not count?
Correct. No, no, driveway does not count.
Okay. And the walkways?
No, walkways don't count either.
Okay, good.
Are you coming up with about 270? 260?
I think I had about 260 or 265.
I'm sorry?
270.
270?
Yeah. Okay, so if we add that to your lot coverage, total existing and proposed, 1,074 plus 270?
Yep.
Is.
113.44.
13.44 divided by 4,000 square feet is 33.6%. So over there.
So they will be looking for 13.6%.
Correct.
Okay. So the question is to include the patio. You can request to amend your existing petition to now show that you're requesting a 13.6% lot coverage variance.
Yeah, that, that would be preferable if, if that was okay. I know my parents love being outside and really just enjoying that view. So that would really be the goal for them to have a patio in the back there.
Okay, so for the board then, I would need a motion to allow the applicants to amend their petition now where their proposed lot coverage variance would now be 13.6%.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion petitioners be allowed to amend their petition to include the patio in the lot coverage. And the request is for, the revised request is for 13.6% lot coverage variance.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that?
Speaking second.
Okay, so by roll call vote, just either aye or nay. Mr. Board?
Mr. Board approves the amended petition.
Okay, Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I vote aye.
Okay, Ms. Bobakis?
I vote to approve.
Mr. Reposa?
I also vote to approve.
Thank you. Chairman votes aye as well. So, okay, so, all right. So now moving forward.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just did have a couple of other questions.
Yep, go ahead.
In regards to the porch on the front that you have planned there. And it looks as though that the petition is in a flood zone, so it has to be elevated. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I guess my question is, there's no shed proposed for the lot. So in terms of storage of mowers and lawn furniture, is, is that lower level going to be used for storage for that?
Yes, that, that is the intent, that the lower level would just be storage unfinished space for, like you said, mowers, snow blowers, things like that.
Okay. Unfortunately, there, there will be some stairs to go up to get to the quote-unquote first level, but it is what it is.
Yeah, we weren't planning to have access from the inside of the house down to the storage. So they would walk out around, if you put the site plan back on the screen, there's only a couple of steps in the front of, yeah. So we had four steps in the front where they could walk from the storage area. So right where that 8.5 elevation is, would be around where the entrance is at the front right of the building. And then they would go up a few, like a landscape steps and could walk, you know, up the driveway. And then they still will have a few more steps to get into the house. But we're planning that if, I mean, God forbid, if they, they needed to be in a wheelchair or anything else, those could be converted to a ramp pretty easily.
Okay.
Would be the, the plan.
Okay, I'm going to, Mr. Chairman. Questions from any of the other board members? Okay. Before I ask for butters or any other interested parties, I do, because it is a substandard lot of record, I do have to ask the special use criteria questions that pertain to that. So if this were allowed, would it allow for adequate, still allow for adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Okay. Would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect the neighboring properties?
No.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks, less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any butters or interested parties that would like to speak on this? Do we have any?
If you're using the app, can you raise your hand if they can?
No? Okay. And just.
But just before we vote, if I could ask another question of the petitioner. I, I did read the, the justification for your variances. And it's actually very well put together. I'm curious who prepared this? And, and particularly your lot coverage for nearby 0.09 acre lots, where you calculated the average lot coverage was 25.1%. Did you go into the tax records to get that information?
Yeah, we pulled that from the Main Street GIS. So that's why, if you flip to that at the end of the, the document, that comp is a little bit different than what we're requesting for the variance just because from the GIS, they don't include, you know, like stoops and stairs and, and little things like that. So we were trying just to compare apples to apples. So we were comparing our building and the porch. And it didn't really include the ancillary features, but that's where that was, I guess, coming from.
Okay, so you put this together yourself. It's very well done.
Yeah, we did. Thank you. It's important, so we spent a lot of time on it.
It's definitely not perfect. There is, just to review this one. There is one glaring flaw that I keep seeing, that there's a bay window on the northern side. And that's intended on being an overhang. And we could have called that out to say that that's, that's not going infringe on the setback requirement. That'll be within that 18-inch requirement for, for overhang.
Right. Okay, okay. All right, so Joseph Frigell and Christie DeSisto Frigell, before the board, Tax Assessor's Map 3 Lot 25, seeking a front yard variance of 13.2 feet and also a 13.6% lot coverage variance for the purpose of constructing a home on that lot. Mr. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I will, again, I'll take the special use permit first for the substandard lot of record. This is a 4,000 square foot lot in an art, art zone. Petitioners walked through all the criterion and the ordinance with the chairman and I'm comfortable that this petitioner will meet all of that criterion. So I vote to approve the special use permit request for a substandard lot of record. In regards to the variances, this will be a first for me. I've probably been on the zoning board, well, 20 years, I'm guessing. And my position has always been, if it's a vacant lot, you can conform to the ordinance. However, in this case, because the lot is 4,000 square feet and because the lot coverage in all of the areas is, given the nature of the size of the lots, is running anywhere from 25 to 30%, I, I read this petition before the meeting and I gave it a lot of thought. And then I came to the conclusion that why should a new house be penalized for having a 4,000 square foot lot? And in my opinion, I, I feel as though it's a reasonable request. And I'm excluding the patio, even though technically we have to approve the 13.6% variance for lot coverage. My feeling is, it's really only 6.9%. Because in my opinion, a patio is not a structure and it's a reasonable request to have roughly 25 feet to the road, the front road. So your setback request of 13.2 feet is also not a real number. So I think that that's plenty of room for frontage, front yard setback. So I think to deny a reasonable home request would certainly amount to a hardship, amounting to more than a mere inconvenience. I commend you on putting together a very thorough and very good, excellent petition. So I vote to approve the 13.6% front yard, excuse me, lot coverage variance and the 13.2 front yard variance to the west.
I approve. Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the front yard setback variance and the lot coverage variance. And I also vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record for the reasons cited by Mr. Board.
Thank you. Ms. Bobakis?
I also vote to approve all of them, but I just want to say this is a delightful request and I'm happy to be part of it. I wish my kids would do the same. So special use permit, yes, lot coverage variance and front yard variance, I approve all three for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reposa?
I also approve all three variances, well, two including the coverage. I wish you guys good luck.
Thank you. Chairman also votes to approve the substandard lot of record special use permit, lot coverage variance and the front yard setback variance. So you've been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
And once again, I, I can't reiterate enough that you make our job easier by presenting the petition that you did. That, that's, that made it a lot easier for us. So thank you.
That was our goal, so thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, how it is?
Thank you so much.
Moving along, the next item on the agenda is a petition by Andrea DeValle Goss, of Tax Assessor's Map 3 Lot 65, 122 Dyton Avenue, in a substandard lot of record special use permit and a 0.8%. 0.8% lot coverage variance.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sue Horowitz. I just wanted to say that I've joined the meeting.
Well, thank you, Sue. Good for the record.
And Bill also just joined.
Oh, and Bill joined as well. Thank you, Bill. Okay, so is, is DeValle Goss on?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
To tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Full name and address for our records, please.
My name is Andrea DeValle Goss. I live at 122 Dyton Avenue in Portsmouth.
Okay, so explain to the board what you'd like to do.
First off, I'd like to say I hope my children want to take care of me like that.
Don't we all?
That was totally delightful. So I purchased the house this summer. It's been my dream to live by the water, so I'm so excited. I just wanted to have a breezeway connect to the house to the garage just for the winters and the cold weather. And also I have a teenage son who, we have a little family gym out there and I'd like to keep tabs on him and be able to check on him easier than going out in the, you know, this weather like today.
Okay, and I did pull up an aerial view myself, but yes, it's a two-car garage that is just for some reason not attached.
Yes, no.
Looking at your plan, you're not asking for any setback variances. It's strictly a lot coverage variance, correct?
Yes.
To me, it's pretty, we're cotton dry. I don't have any other questions. I think, you know, to me, a reasonable request to connect a, a breezeway between a house and the garages. But that's me, so I don't have any other questions. Mr. Board, do you have any questions? Mr. Furell, any questions?
No, sir, no questions.
Ms. Bobakis?
Uh, no, I have none.
Mr. Reposa?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Goss, I do have to ask you, I do have to run through the special use criteria questions?
Yes.
Okay, so if allowed, would this still allow for adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Would it provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
No.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks, less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of the adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, I have to ask for any butters or interested parties to be happy.
If you could raise your hand in the app? Nope, we have none.
Okay. I'm looking, we have no letters on file. So, that being said, Andrea DeValle Goss is before this board for Tax Assessor's Map 3 Lot 65, seeking a 0.8% lot coverage variance for the purpose of adding a breezeway to attach her existing home to a garage.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, just as a point of clarification, if the petitioner already has 21% and they're requesting an increase of 0.8, isn't that a variance request of 1.8 because 20 is the allowable coverage?
Yeah.
So the request is really for 1.8%.
It's an additional 0.8%.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
You're good. So go ahead and vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the special use criterion first. Petitioners met all the criterion for a substandard lot of record and I vote to approve. In regard to the request for an additional 1.8% lot coverage variance, this breezeway is certainly a reasonable request to attach to the garage and is permitted accessory use to fully enjoy the residential property. 1.8% is not excessive. It's the least relief necessary to deny with amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. And I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record and the increase in lot coverage called out in the variance for the reasons cited by Mr. Board.
Thank you, Ms. Bobakis.
I also vote to approve the special use permit and the lot coverage variance for reasons previously stated by my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
Pretty straightforward. I also vote to approve both. Pretty straightforward. I also vote to approve both the special use and the lot coverage.
Thank you. I also vote to approve the special use for a substandard lot of record and also for the 1.8% lot coverage variance. So it has been approved. So you're all set?
Thank you so much. I hope you all have a lovely holiday.
You as well. Thank you very much.
Right. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, but good night.
Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is petitioned by Sean Smith owner seeking a front yard setback and a dimensional and lot coverage of 8.4% increase in lot coverage for the purpose of installing an outside walk-in cooler to what we know as 15-point road. So Mr. Smith, are you on?
He's being represented by court.
Oh, okay. Mr. Smith represents that one?
I do, and I'm not sure who's here with me, but
I see Sean Smith's name there, but he's muted right now.
That's all right. If I can explain it and then maybe we can, we can bring him on. I'm trying to get rid of an icon. So again, it's Court Chappell on behalf of 15-point Road. And I'll make a long story very short. I've learned from Sean that they do not have a cooler on the main floor. The pre-existing restaurant that went back before him, the only cooler is currently in the basement. And if you look at the drawing with the photos that were supplied, it's often loaded through that side door and you see photo one and photo two are the area on the side of the property currently where that fence is. Behind that fence, you see the existing stairway and there's a door back there and there's an existing pad. So the first thing I did was I went back and checked the old variance. And the only way I can explain it is I think there was a variance of about 28% lot coverage and our calculations along with the engineer clearly showed that it's more than that. I think it's just the rule from 2017 that we now count the cement pads and that entire area is a large cement poured patio. So when we look at what we're asking to do, there are coolers that you can get that are, can be attached to the building. This cooler will be used to, obviously the same reasons that he's doing one downstairs. During COVID, you notice that everybody having, you know, the team of truckers that had to carry things downstairs brought everybody through the restaurant. This would allow loading directly into the cooler to help stop some of those things. When you get to the lot coverage issue, if you look at photo one and photo two, you see that the second floor has a mandatory fire exit on it and you see a stairway with a pavilion roof. That is to be removed and the area over the deck is being utilized for the cooler. When we remove that, we have to put by code the stairway back in the front. And when you look at the width and size of the stairway that's added to the front and the cooler and then subtract what you're taking away, you realize that the it's really a 8.4% over the 25% that's allowed in a commercial zone. Remember, this is not residential, so we're allowed 25%. 33.4. It was 33.3. So it's literally 0.1% more than it was, even though it was a pre-existing non-conforming. And it serves to get the cooler on the main floor and to put in the emergency or put back, if you will, a more usable emergency fire exit. If you look at the distance from the building, the closest distance from the building that we have on the plan, you'll see the red line drawn at 25 I'm sorry, 24 feet. So the building is already 24 feet from the road. The stairs will be further away from than that. They'll be 25 feet. But we're still encroaching on a front yard setback of 30 feet in a different area. So our board requires us to come and ask. We don't have a blanket approval to be 24 feet from the road. We have that corner approved at 24 feet and the closest piece of these stairways of the stairway, I'm sorry, would be 25.1. And because it's a 30-foot minimum mandatory, that would require that 4.9-foot variance in that area. And it's really that simple. But again, I believe Sean would be on, or he is on, to tell you that just how inconvenient it is to run now a restaurant of his caliber and his size and to literally carry everything down to the basement level. So unless you have any questions?
Well, I think Sean is on. Sean, are you on now?
Yes, I am. Hi.
All right, Sean. So I have to swear to you. Do you want to raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. Full name and address for Barbara for our record, please.
Sean Smith, 3 Jenkin Street, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Okay, so Sean, Court, I don't know if you heard the whole thing. Court kind of gave us a lowdown. And I'm just looking at this photo too and I see that what I'm going to call the doorway, which is about a person wide and that's how you've been loading and unloading all these years?
Well, yeah, so all the deliveries go through that door, through the kitchen and then down the stairs into this, it was a custom cooler that was built maybe 20 years ago. We had some folks in to see if we could rebuild that or if it's worthwhile. And it just isn't cost-effective. So we thought now, you know, with all these random people coming in and deliveries, we thought this would be a good time to maybe build outside and it would kind of take care of two problems, having a lot of deliveries coming in and get a new cooler. So, you know, we don't have to go up and down the stairs.
I mean, that's got to be, aside from being inconvenient, I would think from a employer safety point of view, having employees going up and down stairs, you want to minimize that.
Yes.
Always the potential for something to happen.
I mean, we do it hundreds of times a evening, running down there, running back up. Again, also, we have such a strange property. The cooler would be located behind this fence, the white fence. You wouldn't really be able to see it. We have a great relationship with all our neighbors. They were supposed to speak. I don't know if they're still with us. I know it's getting kind of late. So it just would be, it's a goal that we've been wanting to do. It's one of our, you know, we pick our battles. This is a big one for us.
All right, so Mr. Chappell, for the record and just to simplify, clarify and speed things up. So you're looking for a 4.9% front yard variance, which actually the proposal is going to encroach less than some of the building exists, correct?
That is correct. We marked 25 in the existing corner and it's
Although 8.4% seems like a large increase, it is in fact only 0.1% more than what already exists, correct?
That is correct. It's also very unique because as you know, the state owns that very large area around the, around the old, the old bridge. So the appearance is it's still 40 feet off the roadways on these sides where the encroachment really is, which is the, you know, the backside where that deck is. But anyone that's been down there, you know that it doesn't have that appearance. It has the appearance of having much more space there.
Right, right. Okay. Any questions, Mr. Borden? No questions, Mr. Chairman. All right. Mr. Furell, any questions for you?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poblakis?
No, no questions.
Mr. Repose?
34. I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Chappell, before I ask for any butters or interested parties?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have any butters or interested parties who want to speak on this?
Raise your hand, speak. There's one, someone in our question and answer section. I mean
Okay. Right, and they say they live at 20-point Road and have no objection to this. So could you answer Mike? Thank you very much.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, do we, I know this is commercial, but
We still have to go through the special use criteria.
I think, I think you may, yes.
Yep, we do. So Mr. Chappell, would this still allow for adequate space for fire protection?
It does. It won't change the fire protection at all. But it would make it much safer to not use the stairways.
Light and air between buildings?
It will not affect the light and air between buildings.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
It will not.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
I don't believe it will.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
It will not.
Okay. So that being said, Sean Smith is before the board for Tax Assessor's Map 21 Lot 105. He's seeking an 8.4% lot coverage variance, a 4.9% front yard variance and also a special use permit for a substandard lot of record. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, again, I'll take the special use permit request first. The petitioner walked through all the criteria in the ordinance and in my opinion meets the ordinance and will not create any issues. So I vote to approve. In regards to the dimensional variances being requested, the 4.9-foot variance is a reasonable request. The building is already encroaching more than that in other areas. And the 8.4% lot coverage variance, as the chairman stated, may seem excessive. However, you have to take into consideration that the additional coverage being proposed is only 1/10 of 1%. And I think it really comes down to whether or not this is a hardship amounting to more than a mere inconvenience. And to have a cooler in the basement where you have to go up and down the stairs for a restaurant, in my opinion, is, is not convenient at all. And to improve this situation or to not improve this situation would certainly amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. It's the least relief necessary and I vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record. As well, I vote to approve the lot cover, lot coverage variance and front yard setback variances for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Poblakis?
I also vote to approve the lot coverage variance, the special use permit and the front yard setbacks for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Mr. Repose?
I also vote to approve for reasons previously stated by my peers. On both. Lot coverage and setbacks.
And what about special use permit?
And that one too, if you want to throw that in there.
Yeah, we need to. Thank you. Yeah. Chairman votes to approve the lot coverage variance and the front yard setback request. As far as the special use permit for a substandard lot of record, I think if you read, he would impose substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors. I think to deny this would actually impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors. So I vote to approve that as well. I think it's a very reasonable question. In this day and age of COVID, for restaurants to continue on and want to improve, my hat's off to you, Sean.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, so it has been approved. You're all set?
Hey, thank you so much. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the last item on the agenda is a petition by Anthony and Betty Silvio for Tax Assessor's Map 58 Lot 4 and 5. And requests a special use permit for dimensional variance on substandard block and land space, dimensional variance on land space requirements table. So I believe, Mr. Chappell, this is yours as well?
It is. And I, so this is, when, when two people, when you have lots side by side, you can go to the planning board and change the lot line. It's what's called an administrative subdivision because it's not creating a new lot. It's merely altering the lines. If these were two conforming lots as to size and they still had 110-foot of frontage and 20,000 square feet, the zoning board never sees them. But we go to the planning board and we ask to move the line and they say, that's a good idea. We would move that line. And we'll send the zoning board a recommendation saying, we think they should grant your petition. But we cannot grant it because technically the smaller lot, which had only 50-foot of frontage, now goes to 70 and that's more conforming and that's great. But the one that had 107 and goes down by that 20 feet has less, so that's more non-conforming. So if the, if the mic's on the, you have the plan mic or no? Did the planning? Okay. So the, the logic for it is really easy. If you, the dotted line is the existing lot line. And that is, I don't have the, if you, the house is the irregular shaped J. Just to the right of that where the cursor is, the dotted line is the existing lot line. The existing lot line runs through the stairs. It runs through the stoop on the house. The sheds that belong to the house are also on the commercial piece and not on the residential piece. You can see that even though the lot line is where it is, the fence has always been that the area to the left of the fence is residential. The area to the right of the fence is that commercial. So we're really just moving the lot line to where the existing fence is. When we did that and looked at the sheds, one of those sheds is on a concrete foundation and can't be moved. And as this board knows, if it's 120 feet, it has to be three, the, the rear shed's being removed. The front shed that's on that foundation is 100 and, less than 120 square feet and it needs to be three feet from the lot line. So rather than follow the fence line and create a need for a variance in the back, we moved the line over so that when you ran it parallel to the other boundaries, it would give us that three feet from that shed. It makes the house lot more conforming. It makes the business lot less conforming, but the same size it has always been in the field with the fences and things. And I believe the variance that are required is the house lot that had a 50-foot frontage now has 72 feet of frontage. So that would require a, it would, it would be 110 feet. So that is like we've stated on the petition, but if it's 72 feet, it would be the 38-foot variance on the 1/10 requirement. The commercial lot drops to 86. Drops to eighty-six feet, point oh eight. So it would have a twenty-four-point-two, uh, foot variance. Other than that. Uh. And there being substandard lots. I don't think we need variances for the. Areas of the house that are already too close. And we got the steps seventeen feet away, where a side yard in an R-twenty would be fifteen. So we, I believe we met that.
So, Mr. Chappell, for the record.
Cleans it up.
So for the record, you're only seeking besides. The special use criteria for substandard lots of record. And I'm a little confused. You're seeking two frontage variances, correct?
Yes. Even though one is getting twenty feet more, I think it still requires. The variance to the extent it is less than one-tenth.
I don't think it, I think it's. If you're rating it more conforming, it would be the variant. Even though it's smaller. It exists.
I, I, I would tend to agree with that. Um. So.
I think if we approve that, if the plan is approved. The very, when the planning board, the truth is, they want your blessing. But when they record the plan as is. It grants the variances instantly without the zoning decision, really.
All right. So. Which lot is actually requiring the frontage lot or lot five?
Well, if you look at. Lot four, add one oh seven and goes to eighty-six. Under that logic, because it is the one that is. Becoming smaller.
Right.
One-ten minus eighty-six would be twenty-four feet.
Four-point.
Variance. Did, did you mention? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Uh, uh, did, uh, Mr. Chappell, did you mention twenty-four-point-two? And, and you mentioned eighty-six feet, but I'm looking at the diagram. And on the commercial lot, lot four, I'm seeing eighty-four-point-one-nine. For frontage. Well, I'm not sure where you're getting the eighty-six.
Trying to make sure that you have the same plan I have.
Um.
I have a number, well, you can't see my cursor. I have a full-size plan. In my hand that is supposed to be identical.
Eighty-six-point-oh-eight.
I have eighty-six-oh-eight.
Yeah, John, you're looking at the rear of the property, you're looking from the property.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. Upside down. Sorry.
I was hoping I didn't give you the wrong plan there.
Nope, nope.
So because it's eighty-six-oh-eight, it's technically twenty-three-point-nine-two.
Right. And that's a lot guy. All right. Okay, so to Mr. Shoah's point, lot five. Already lacks frontage and you're actually increasing it to become more conforming. So. That shouldn't require any.
That, that time. It's. As long as everybody knows that that is exactly what we're doing. Technically, that you are. Technically, there's an argument we made. We are creating a lot. That is still non-conforming. It's just less non-conforming.
Right, but you're not creating one.
I. I, I agree. I have heard towns do it differently. You're basically approving the plan, so it will be fine. But I do think that lot. Four. Requires that front yard variance. And then under the same. Uh, argument, lot five does not need a lot size variance. But since it's an R-twenty. And it was thirteen thousand nine three-five. It'll be reduced to eleven thousand four seventy-six.
And Mr. Chappell, when you turn around, we can't hear you.
Well, there's a, the size of the lot. Number four is being reduced to eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-six feet. Down the two thousand feet from thirteen. So I think it also needs a. Lot size variance. And that's going to be. Nine thousand five hundred and twenty-four foot variance.
And then again, five thousand, nine thousand five hundred twenty-four.
I'm sorry, it's eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four.
Uh, eleven. Correct. Yes, eight, uh, right. Correct. Okay. So basically, there's two variances requested plus the special use.
That, that is, that is correct.
Okay, got it.
And lot coverage too.
But that?
Lot coverage on lot four.
That's what we were just talking about, lot size, right?
No, the coverage. Yeah, yeah, the same. There should be three for, for lot four. Frontage.
Yeah.
Area and coverage. Front and area coverage.
Area's eighty-five twenty-four.
Yeah.
Coverage is.
What time?
Point-nine percent. And lot five, nothing on the special use criteria, right?
I don't think, I think you're rating it more conforming every way.
Right.
There's no struck, that's normally a additional structure argument.
Right, yeah.
I think we meet the criteria anyway.
Okay, so for the rest of the board, just to clarify. There is lot four and lot five on drawing number one. And this is what they're seeking. If the lot line. If, if we approve, um. Lot line being realigned, they would require a variance of twenty-four feet. From the frontage requirement. An area, a lot size variance for area of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four. Square feet. And a lot coverage variance of point-nine percent. That's what they're seeking along with. Substandard lot of record, special use permit criteria for both lots. So. Mr. Chappell, let me just run through this for both lots, four and five, to get into the special use criteria. So. First of all, if allowed, would it still allow the adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Does it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes, there's no, it's exactly the same as it currently exists.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
It will not.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks, lessen the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No. It will not.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighbors?
It will not.
Okay, thank you. Um.
And it, it's really putting the line where it exists in the field.
Right, I, I understand. I'm just waiting for Mr. Shoah to get back to see if we have. Any others or interested parties. For the record, we do have an advisory opinion. From the planning board, it says, uh. Advisory opinion is only to change lot lines between two non-formal lots. Planning board received comments concerning the request. I legally noticed public informational meeting held on November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. Twenty-one members present at the November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty meeting were. Guy Vissonette, Kathleen Wilson, Luke Harding, Seth Pilat, David Garso, Edward Loops, and Ryan Tibbets. Attorney Court Chappell, one-seventy-one, Chase Rowe was present to represent the advocates. Variance is required because both lots are non-conforming and will continue to be non-conforming. After lot lines are changed as requested. Mr. Vissonette called for a pardon of reasons and parties that were not. Motion. Motion was made to make favorable recommendations in zoning board review to approve the lot line changes. Supposedly attached subdivision plan. Uh, by, signed by, uh, Leon C. Wazinski, administrative officer. So, uh, Mike, do we have any others or interested parties to speak on this?
Uh, if you could raise your hand, I don't believe so. There's one person who's here for the first.
Okay, and, uh, we have no letters on the file? So seeing none, um. Uh, Anthony and Betty Sylvia are before the board for tax assessors map fifty-eight lot, four and five. The question to, uh, realign a lot line. Um. Which would require a twenty-four-foot frontage variance for frontage. On lot four, along with an area variance of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four square feet. And a lot coverage variance of point-nine percent. Along with the special use criteria for a substandard lots of record. Mr. Morton?
Chairman, I'll take the substandard lots of record and special use permit request first for both lots four and lot five. Petitioner walked through all the criteria. And petitioner meets all the criteria from both lot four and lot five, and I vote to approve. In regards to the dimensional relief request, requested for lot four. Lot four is requiring a twenty-four-foot frontage requirement variance of a hundred and ten feet. Is required under the ordinance. Regards to the area variance, it's a R-twenty zone, twenty thousand square feet is required. The new lot will be two thousand square feet less. At eleven thousand four seventy-six, requiring. An area variance of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four feet. Regards to lot coverage, the lot coverage variance that's being requested is point-nine percent. The lot coverage is minimal. Essentially, this request cleans up both lots, even though they're substandard lots of record. Just makes sense to clean up the lot lines. Uh, it's a better plan, um. And to deny would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I hope I get this all right. Um, I vote to approve the special use permit. For a substandard lot of record referencing lot four and five. And then relative to lot four, I vote to approve the frontage variance. The area variance and the lot coverage variance.
Very good, Mr. Furell. Ms. Bob Lachas?
Okay, um, I vote to approve the, uh, frontage variance, the lot coverage variance. And the special use permit for four and five. Is that right? Yes.
It's just, uh, the special use permit is, yes, for lots four and five.
And five, okay. And then the area variance for lot four?
Correct.
And what did I leave out?
There was a lot coverage variance.
Oh, yeah. And a lot coverage variance. I vote to approve all of them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raposa?
You know, I'm not going to get this. Yeah. Can we, uh, say I approve all the variances?
And the special use.
For both lots? Say again, and the special use. Request.
For reasons previously stated.
Correct. Nice job.
Okay. Chairman votes to approve, uh, the special use permit for both lots four and five. Along with the twenty-four-foot frontage request. Uh, the eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four square foot area variance. And the point-nine percent lot coverage for lot four. At for reasons previously stated by Mr. Morton. So that has been approved.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great holiday.
I would like to wish all board members a happy and healthy holidays. Even though they are going to be different than they have been in the past. And hopefully next year at some point, we can all gather back in here together. And have what I would consider a normal meeting. So.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. Have a good holiday, folks.
You too.
Bye. Go.